We're gonna let Matt Cox pray, open the meeting, then we'll do the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you so much, just for all your many blessings. Lord, we ask that you would just be with this meeting. Lord, just guide our steps. Let us have an open mind and open heart. Thank you again, Lord, for all that you do for us. For it's in your name we pray.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody here for this work session and like to thank the Board of Aldermen for being so generous and letting us sit up here. When you look down, they say the cameras work better this way. I don't know. But anyway, I'm not used to sitting up here. I'm used to sitting down with everybody else. So. Anyhow, thank you for being here. There's no public comments on the list there. And so basically, what we're here to do tonight is basically. There's a 10-year plan that Atoka City put together, or maybe it's a 20-year plan a while back. And all we're trying to do now is just really kind of see. As far as economic development, industrial development, sort of everybody get on the same page and to be sure that your industrial development board is actually carrying out. What the town is actually wanting us to do and just trying to dig down a little bit more specifics. Also, we have some consultants here that are. We're planning on talking to about coming on board with us, which is pretty normal for IDB board and everything, but. They're gonna actually help answer questions on timelines, just different types of things on how. How they go about recruiting, you know, different businesses, different industries, you know, to the town and the process that goes into that. We'll also. Touch on any kind of infrastructure that the town needs to from that aspect, because the industrial development board is part of trying to help with that also. And so basically, that's what this meeting is all about. So any questions you have, we definitely want to want to try to address them. And so what I'm probably going to do now, I guess, would be just to open it up to. I'm not sure which one wants to speak over there first, but John or but I tell you what, why don't y'all all introduce yourselves, if you would.
I'm Good Rowan. Actually, I'm from Drummond, Tennessee, if y'all know where that is. Ain't too far off, and I've been coming back for a long since my wife retires Shelby County and got enough time in. I'm getting out of Shelby County as fast as I can. Name of our group is Economic Development Associates.
My name is Kerry Vaughn, and for probably about 20 years, I grew up on Simmons Road. It used to be at Topeka back then. I think now it's classified as Drummond. And they've been in the Rosemark Millington area for the last 30 years. And so a short stint years ago, when at the time Commissioner. Bill Hagerty and the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. So my background's been in economic development, staffing, recruiting, and consulting. Our joy to be here tonight. Thank you for your time.
My name is John Chris. I have a long economic development background. I served for eight years on the Davidson County. Planning Commission in Nashville, Tennessee, and I came back here. I'm a native. I grew up on Shake Rack, by the way, population 44. And I moved into Millington and went to school there. I have relatives in South, in North, in North Delta County, but that's where I kind of grew up, out here on the line. Well, in any event, I always wondered when I was in Nashville, I always thought about this area, West Tennessee, and I said, why is it we're not growing like the rest of the state sometimes? And I learned about things like TIPS and pilots and those kind of things, those tools that an economic developer has. And so I've come back and I had been serving for four years up till now in the Millington Industrial Development Board. And been involved in what has happened in Millington the last five years. I appreciate y'all inviting us tonight. I'm part of the economic development team. We'd like to help you guys and serve. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we could introduce ourselves. I'm Jim Craig. I'm the chairman of the IDB and just go down here and introduce you guys.
My name's Matt Cox. I'm the vice chair of the IDB.
My name's Bobby Chapman. I'm the treasurer for the IDB board.
Deanna Webb. I'm the secretary for the IDB.
And I'm Harry Sinneson. I'm just here, so.
Okay, I tell you what, why don't we start it off, if you guys would like, just whatever you want to start with. One thing you may want to touch on is just. One thing we've been working on is infrastructure, a bridge, okay, over the railroad tracks. And that kind of come to a little bit of a halt and we're kind of waiting. Don't know how the plug deal is gonna go here, Nick. So anyway, if y'all want to address that, that'd be something you could start with and then just go from there.
Well, I, my background, basically, I ran a store, a convenience store, a service station, tire store. We've just. Been open 60 years this year. I was lucky enough that people thought enough of me to vote me in for two terms to the county commission. Where I was over the economic development of Shelby County. Back then, all they wanted to do was pilots and everything. Well, I went and got on an airplane and went to Charleston, Jacksonville, Louisville. Find out how these towns were coming, building, outbuilding our area. Well, they were doing it with TIPS. I got with John. He was on the, the planning commission up there in Nashville. He's actually one of the people that helped run the type of stuff in Nashville. And I learned about TIPS. I've done like my daddy told me to do. If you don't know something, get in any books and learn. Well, we've done about. I've done probably every tip that's been done in Shelby County up to this time right now. Basically, let me explain a TIP is, and then we'll get into the, to the road. A TIP is a tool that the state gives us. To use private money to do public projects. When we do a TIP, nobody loses. The city doesn't lose, the county doesn't lose, developer doesn't lose. Basically, what he does, he knows how he gets his own. Loan to do the, the TIP or the development. And over a period of 10 years. Say, for instance, if you've got a field there and that field's bringing in $1,500 a year in property taxes, probably in a green bill, whatever. All right, you get a developer goes in there and he builds, I'll say, several million dollars worth of development in there. He's actually paying to put that infrastructure that was normally called the city. And then after he gets it, he's got the loan at the bank. And there's a, there's a formula that they use that goes into the trustee. When he pays his taxes every year, half of that money goes into the coffers of the county and the city. The other half goes over a period of years to pay for that infrastructure. So therefore, none of the public's money is at risk. When it comes to the road, I talked, I started talking with Amanda and Mark, and I've done some preliminary. In Millington, when I was on the commission in Millington, y'all know Millington had a bad flood problem. It took me eight years of going back and forth to Washington and Nashville, but I got an $80 million residency grant. Forty million of that came to the project there in Millington. Y'all know we're 385, Paul Barrett Parkway is. Back when they built that, they didn't know that they were creating a natural dam. Because when Big Creek floods, it floods to the south. But because of the 385 being there, it pushed it back on the city. Oh, Commissioner Pooh, you remember when I, when I was younger, Millington used to flood on the north end of town. We got that fixed and then started on. But anyway, what we done, I got a $40 million grant that I went to the state, got a $4 million man, so it's 44 million. The county put in 2 million and the city put in 1 million. That project created several jobs, but also it stopped mitigating the flooding issue. But there's also some recreational stuff that's going there, too. With the road, I've already done some preliminary. It looks like that we can go to the federal government. This is gonna be up to see on how long they want the road, but I know they want the flood. Say, for instance, just use round numbers. Say if it was $80 million, just use what I use for. What you could probably do is get an $80 million grant from the Fed. I've already talked to Senator Blackburn, Senator Hagerty. Got them thinking that way. And when y'all were ready, I can bring them out and we can go out there and show them, but y'all gonna have to come up with a design. We can help y'all with the design. But then the state would pitch in 15%. That would leave 5% that would have to come probably, I'd say, 4% from the county and 1% from the city. So I, I know I make it sound easy. It's a lot of work, but it can be done and it can be done at no expense to, to the public. And that's the thing that, you know, that amazed me when I learned this, this process. All this stuff you see going in in Memphis and in North Shelby County, all that's being done with the TIP. That means the municipalities ain't out, aren't out one night. Plus, they're getting more. After the taxes are paid every year than they were getting, about 10 times more than they were getting when it was just a cotton field or a bean field out there. So that's the kind of stuff that the expertise that we bring. We got together, John, he was my mentor when he come to TIPS and they call it creative financing. That's what they call. But you can see with the other, there's one going in, in Barnsley right now that I've helped him with. That's, that's an awesome, gonna be an awesome place. But there's all kind of creative things to think, and John again into this, it's called a seat case for life. That's where the developer can get a loan upfront on part of the project to help. And it's called a stack, how they stack their funds. So with that, I want to hand it over to Kerry and let him talk about our connections and our consulting part of it.
Yeah. So in conjunction with that, we've also talked to Congressman's office and keep in mind, too, that the new head of the Corps of Engineers. Just got affirmed about a week ago, is coming from Senator Hagerty's office. And then we've had two of our contacts just been appointed to the TVA board. So we. Those are the type of things that we want to leverage for the town of Atoka. And those are the type of relationships we can parlay, not just for the bridge, but for these other opportunities going forward. So I think for us coming here tonight. I think one of our takeaways is what, what are the top three things that the town wants to achieve, the top five things that you want to tackle? And how can we complement those efforts? And I think a lot of it comes back to who is in the lead attraction role. So when you talk about economic development. Who's the top salesman that's going out there and leading that effort? And I can tell you in Memphis, I'll just use Memphis as an example. The Chamber of Commerce is the lead attraction. They, they bring Google to town. They bring XAI. They bring all those type of opportunities. And they run everything by the edge board. I had the privilege of serving on the edge board when Kerry was part of the county commission. I served on that board for about six years and we represented and looked at everything that came across. We were basically the IDB for Memphis, Shelby County. And so if you can picture the chamber was the salesperson, the IDB was the conduit to bless everything or to veto everything. And that's how it functions. So when you look at a Topeka. Is it the mayor and the mayor's office that's going to be going out, attracting, recruiting, building relationships, cultivating relationships to make that happen? Is it somebody from the chamber? Is it somebody from this IDB? Those are questions that you have to answer. Like who's gonna be in what role? Who's gonna quarterback the deal? In the meantime, we can help with some of that. We can, we can coincide and help with some of that. A lot of it pertains to the relationships, not only across the state, but across the mid-south and also in DC. That we can bring for the benefit of Atoka. So I think as you're learning more about us, we want to definitely learn about where do you want to be in the next five years specifically? I think that's gonna help us as we go.
Kerry, my role in the whole thing here, and you've probably seen the growth of roughing North Shelby County over the last five years especially. That's about that coincides with the time we all got to get started getting together and working together. And I, I'm more of the rubber meets the road guy. I'm the one, I've been in commercial real estate all of my life. I have gone and met with the franchisees, the, the hobby lobbies, the targets, the. You know, TJ Maxx people, and I'm the one that recruits those companies a lot of the time and gets them here. I knew we needed another kind of grocery store in Millington, for example. I went after Aldi, it was low hanging fruit. Aldi was looking to expand. I think you. Have probably seen in the news, they wanted to put 350 new stores in America. Why can't it be Millington? We have. Right now, Publix is looking at West Tennessee. They're beginning to look at big Publix grocery stores there. Publix, why can't it be in Topeka? Why can't it be anywhere? You know, that you have to make a case for yourself. And the way it generally works, and you, you don't get the. The roles reversal. And some people go, well, we'll get, we will get, others say, come here, do what I want to get from that. It doesn't work that way. The way it works is we find developers who say, I've got 40 acres. I'll build a shopping center here, but I want it to have good anchors. And then we take them to Publix and say, we have a site. What do you think? They buy the site. That's what they do. You have to have a site and you have to have a developer willing to put his money up. Typically, you'll find out that Publix will build a whole shopping center and buy them out. A lot of those kind of things. But when you do those, we use TIPS to attract them as well. About 10 or 15% of a project. The cost that it can be covered by tax increment financing, and that's for the infrastructure in the ground, all water, sewer, electricity gap. For the parking lots, the paving, the lights, the curbs and governing and the sidewalks, everything except the boxes that the stores are gonna be in. And the traffic lights, those kind of things are all done. The city doesn't pay for those. They don't pay for any of that infrastructure. It's all done by the developer. And then they get it paid back over time in the incremental difference in the property taxes where it went wrong, too. And so you see, what ends up happening is we pay for 15% of their project. They bring it to where, to Topeka, could be that place. And so Atoka needs to really discern what their value proposition is gonna be. Why should people come to Atoka? What's in it for them? It's a great place. You got really, you got some really good things in your quiver, your arrows in your quiver. You've got traffic count here that's beyond most people. Look at Highway 51 and rush hours, they backs up in here, you know? It backs up for miles. Take pictures of that. It's very valuable, you know? A second thing is, you have very high household income here, your, your peer standard. You have a lot of things going for you. Is this a case that has to be made? You have to find some people willing to play with, with land, those sort of things. But that's what we do. We go for where the rubber meets the road. I, I work on making the deals happen so that we can actually capture those and make them a lot, yeah.
I'll even say this. What, what was it, five years ago, maybe eight years ago, Atoka was, was named the fifth safest neighborhood in the nation? I mean, in today's world, that, that sells. That sells big time. So I think, yeah, I think it's discerning on what we need to go after and how we need to proceed.
Okay, what about industry as far as, how do, how do you, how do y'all go after that?
Well, one of the things we do, we work with the state economic development, TVA, we have connections with all them. First thing we, we could do is come up with your site. If you can come up with a site, then we can market that site for you. Y'all have rail. You definitely got, got two highways and one on each side of you. So I mean, y'all got a lot of good stuff already in place, but the, the main thing is getting what you want. You don't need somebody, we're not type people that's gonna come in here and say, you need this, this, this. I mean, it's gotta be something you want. I mean, we're not here just to make money. I mean, don't get me wrong, we, we do good work with that. That's not what's the first thing that we look at. What we leave behind is what matters to us. When we advocate for a community or whatever, we put everything we got into it. Mark, you've seen our work and you've seen what we've done in other places. And it's never been about the title sign. It's been about making the place that we're working a lot better. Working with you, for you, not against you. Does that make sense, folks? I mean, you have a lot of people give it to you. We can do this, we can do that. You need to do it this way, do it that way. Well, that's fine. But it's gotta meet your needs. It's gotta be what you want. It's gotta be what the community wants.
Yeah. Jimmy, I'm gonna say this to your question. I, I would say is, our students come out of Monford High School and Brighton High School and. Tipton Rosemark Academy and other areas. Is there a way they could stay here and make us proud? Not go away and make us proud. But stay here and make us proud. Well, that can only happen if there's viable job opportunities, right? It can only happen if we're producing a viable, educated workforce. And so one of the things that the industries look at is, where are they gonna draw the people? And so not too long ago, we were with the governor and about 25 other people at Toyota Bodine up in Jackson, Tennessee. And the plant managers, the governor asked the plant manager, what does the state need to do? And the plant managers, uh, the governor asked the plant manager, what does the state need to do to make more jobs happen within the plant? And this plant manager said, um, you don't. What you need to do is help me find viable workers. People that'll start on Monday instead of Friday, people that'll pass a drug test and people that can do simple arithmetic on a clipboard. You help me find that, governor, I'll give you all the jobs you want under one roof right here at Toyota. And I think that's the key going back to industry is we look to who's going to be the lead attraction? Who's going to go after those type of opportunities? And once we land them, where are we going to pull the workforce? One thing they had, we had as a blessing in Millington was we had the naval base. And so as people retire from the naval base at fifty, fifty-five with federal benefits, typically they stay in the mid-south, we could take them and put them in other jobs. And we had the airport, which was the second largest runway in the state. And so that helps recruit industry, recruit opportunities because they want to be close to the airport, right? And so I think as we go after those type of opportunities, uh, can we bring them to the town of Atoka? And can we backfill those opportunities with the right workers?
Jim, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll give you a real life uh, story here that happened, is happening now. A company uh, located on the other side of Arlington, uh, was a, you may have heard of, it's public now. It's called the most dependable fountains. Have you ever heard of that company? Make the water fountain that you see these on the streets of Beale Street, you see them in the zoo. All the fountains that are six feet tall, they have a place for the adult to drink, a child to drink. And then sometimes they have a dog dish down below you, if you will. They're made out of heavy, heavy stainless steel. They have to lift them in place with a crane so they're not damaged by vandalism, those sort of things. They're known all over the country. They're the largest manufacturer of public water fountains in the United States now. They're a little, little bitty thing. It started with four, on the other side of Arlington. They uh, all the beach showers in Florida, in the Florida Panhandle, all of Florida are made here, right outside of Arlington. Well, guess what? They, they, over the last twenty years, they outgrown their facility. They wanted to expand, but they're landlocked over there with two things on either side of them. They started asking, talking to Arlington, and Arlington couldn't accommodate. And but we heard about how, how fast they're growing and rapidly. They'd gone from about eight million dollars a year in revenue to twenty-five million dollars in three years, how fast it was growing. So they said, we have to do something. So they came and started asking, we went and approached them. And, and now they are building a new facility. It's, it's eighty percent larger than what I have. It's just down the highway here a little bit. But why did they move over here? They said, people who work for us, they live between Arlington and Munford. So they live, we're going to move closer to our workers if they're here. We're coming to the area. They pay fifty-five thousand dollars a month. That's the low salary, fifty-five thousand. So it's, it's a very positive thing. So we talked to them, what did they need? They needed to know where they could get, uh, certain trades that will help them build their factory. They didn't know what steel is going to come from. We got lots of steel going across Arkansas and down to Tennessee and put them together with people and made all those kind of things happen. And they, they just, they just closed on the land last week.
Yeah. A good example is we, we have an ammo company that we've been speaking to since February. And a couple of things have happened. Uh, they were the only ammo company that had a presence in Tennessee, but was not on the state vendor list. And so we went up to Nashville in February and it took us about four or five months, but we finally got them on the vendor list as the only company in Tennessee to be on the Tennessee vendor list. We got that done. And the second thing they're looking at is moving their operations to Tipton County. And so now we're in the process of looking at land and opportunity. They have a distribution center in Jackson, Mississippi. Uh, we could very easily put this ammo company in a, in the town of Atoka. And so those are the type of things that we want to bring. And now that they're part of the vendor opportunity with the state. Uh, they, they sell directly to uh, they sell directly to the, not the buyer, but up to the municipality. They are municipality direct only. And so I would love for them to be right here in the town of Atoka. Those are the type of things that we want to do.
Okay, uh, I've got one more question right now. I want to say this the right way. I, I understand Millington's getting a target mini or something like that, that right?
It's a new, new prototype. Well, it's, it's supposed to be come, okay? They have some problems. They took on some debt when it comes to school buildings. Uh, Shelby County's got municipal school, okay? And in Tennessee, schools don't have tax in the form. So uh, Millington had a normal amount of debt when we did all this TIF. Uh, but they uh, the schools wanted to build a new building. So they got a USDA loan, I think it was three percent or something like that. That's fine. But when the city, and I, and I warned them about this. I retired in, in December, but I warned them about this. I said, if you take that debt, that school debt on, now, now the schools are paying their debt. Okay? But on paper, it looks like it's city debt. And basically uh, it went from four, what, forty-two, no, thirty-nine, thirty-nine to seventy-two point nine percent. Now, when, at the end of the year, when the taxes are paid or first year when the taxes are paid and when the increments come, there's a form, formula to pay these TIFs back, right? Well, when Millington sent in their uh, their uh, work, paperwork to uh, the trustee, it showed that they had a seventy-two point nine percent debt to income ratio. Even though thirty percent of that debt was from the schools and they're paying the debt. They've proved that they're paying their own debt, but the city had to be the conduit to carry that debt, right? Uh, what happened was it inverted the uh, formula. And Millington got extra money upfront that was supposed to go to the banks to pay on these tips, okay? Uh, I've got a, right now, Jim, we were in Nashville this last weekend. I've, I've got an amendment to the TIF law, which states, now it's only going to happen in Shelby County because Shelby County right now is the only one that has municipal schools in the state. But I got to looking and uh, uh, this thing can be fixed with just a simple amendment that says, if you can prove that, if you can prove that schools are paying their own debt, you can't use that portion when figuring the increments for the TIFs, which would solve everything, okay? And uh, we've got the state working on it now. It's not going to be no big deal. It, it really would, I don't think y'all have municipal schools up here, do you? No. It's all county schools, right? Uh, but anyway, uh, until they get that settled, uh, these people, I mean, they got a man that's going to be on the hook for a six million dollar road that he built there behind loans. So uh,
Let me, let me address the, the Target store correctly, okay? Target uh, had an interest in Millington uh, because they closed the store over on uh, Germantown Road, I think you know, that was next to Walmart over there. Close it. They were looking for other places. They're looking at other somewhere right now. And uh, they self-finance. Uh, in other words, they don't have to go to a bank for a loan for their TIF. They just self-finance it all out of their pocket. And so they called us and said, we got our money back. We told them you can self-finance. Buc-E just doing the same thing over in Galway, trying to self-finance. Uh, and you get your money back. We talked about that process. They are going through that process anyway and they're running a risk, as Terry says, pretty big risk, actually. Uh, the city wants to get Terry in us to straighten it out for them, which he's going to do. Thing is though, uh, Target is bringing, I saw the economic impact analysis that we're bringing two hundred twenty-four jobs in. They're going to pay eighty-one point two million dollars out in payroll over the next twenty years. And they're going to sell, their, their targeted sales volume is going to be one point eight seven billion dollars over the next twenty years. Getting back the sales taxes, we contributed to Millington's fifty-one million dollars in their plan here. So they're, they're over here arguing about four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, keeping it. And they are going to mess up a fifty-one million dollar income stream. And so that's where we're getting this fit. So the, the thing is, it's, it's, the, the story will come, you just have to give them, you have to give them a reason to. And as you, you saw, we started on four through Congress with the little shopping center down here that you see Longhorn Stakes in and, and Hobby Lobby. We put that in and then we decided to do that out parcel building. We've added more towards there. Now the density is there. It's become sort of original for all because we found out one thing for sure that Atoka can make pay off. People will do anything to go into Memphis stash purchases up there. They want to stay out here and buy what they do. Okay? They want to do it out here and they want to stay in their neighborhood. They don't want to go in, we'll chase them anymore. They don't go anywhere. So we wanted to make Millington kind of a guest destination at that time. The, the rest of the story is the stores are happy, the word gets out, playing all the, the people who, who are leasing, leasing agents. Leasing agents are very powerful. They're the ones that can build a shopping center with a bunch of boxes, but who, what kind of stores do you want? Who gets to decide that? Well, this, the community that, we went around and had a focus group to say what kind of stores they want. And that's how they already arrived over there. So the thing is, is you can take the, you can take uh, a city and let it express itself. Get the kind of stores they want. That's what Terry's talking about, the only thing you want. And you can bring those things in. When it starts rolling, it starts rolling quicker. And because, because we built the, the Petco and the Hobby Lobby, I mean, it's been the Petco and the, and the, and the beauties and the, and Buffalo Wild Wings. That's why I was able to get darts and restaurants to bring Longhorn Stakes. Took me three days of talking to darts and restaurants to get them to bring Longhorn Stakes. What's in Millington? Why can't we come here? Well, now that they've come here, they don't have to ask a question about Atoka anymore. They can say it's all here. We know the people here. We used to be dealing with something in a different place. Oh, it is. But that's an easy sell. It was a hard sell, but it took some work to do that. Now everybody's, the word's out and all leasing agents know to put something in this area. You just got to make a home for them. You got to make it a holiday. You got to get it right. Then you go after them.
That's, that's what I was talking about. This, the city, the IDB, the planning commission, the mayor uh, and aldermen, y'all all get together and lay the city out like y'all want it. And then tell us what you want us to do. And uh, we can take you from, from developer, own up to, to getting the uh, big box stores here, whatever you want. You know, it's up to you.
Some of it's on the fly, like uh, needs happen. So you see, for example, who, who would have thought Campbell Clinic was coming to Millington? Nobody. You know why? They come here, they'll build that VA clinic over there where VA Harold used to be, uh, school and uh, they found out that the veterans clinic is not going to have an operated surgery option. They had to go somewhere to get it. So with Campbell Clinic widely, but unit here, they'll be able to get people right across the street. There was no other operated surgery in Atoka. But what did it do? It came to Millington. Now they've got a place that they can go get CAT scans, they can get uh, ultrasounds, they can get all X-rays and things you couldn't get in a normal doctor.
But one of the things that the airport is talking about, has been for a while, is some type of uh, some type of restaurant at the airport. If you remember the old Bombay Bicycle Club, it was kind of in uh, Overly Square back in the day, that type of concept. So if you fly into Millington on a charter plane, you're trying to get to Blue Oval and you've got an SUV waiting out there from Homer Skelton Ford, maybe you want to stop in there and grab a bite to eat, make a phone call, do some business. Uh, you know, wash your face a little bit, take off. We want to provide those type of opportunities. So even bringing a restaurant to the airport, we've got that on the list. And then John's also, he and Terry have been working on this new uh, Buc-E's. He mentioned that. I tell these guys, it's pronounced Boosie's. It's spelled Boosie's, but we always say Buc-E's. But they're, they're working on that to say, when Buc-E's hits Act Twenty-Eight, right? What other vendors and suppliers and other entities can we bring to support Buc-E's? So all this is exciting and all this, we, we would love to hear from the town so we can accommodate uh, your efforts.
You have everything you need right now. You just need to have a, how to sell it. You need to have to put it in order to get their hands on it, get their mind around it. And now the IDB is going to be asked. We have, if you have a, a project you want to bring in and you like it, and you want to give it a tax increment financing deal? Yep, there's, there's a legal way to do that. And it, it takes the six to seven months to go through the process legally in Tennessee. And a lot of documents are required, a lot of public meetings are required. And when you do that, there is no taxpayer money involved. They're going to pay me some. But you give them that so that they raise the value of that taxable places on that land so they can live in that zone. And when you, you would have to pass it and make a recommendation to the board of mayor and aldermen. Board of mayor and aldermen will have to act on it. And then it's got to go to county commission. County commission's got to do too, is they got to get through three bodies. You're able to do that, then you, then you get, you get money, you get built. And it's getting built with other people's money. It's not a VA penny, a taxpayer money in Atoka. You, or anything else, you get the utilities to the site that aren't there. You know, you may have to, you can't, you can only use TIF money a certain distance from the site. You can't go very far outside that site. But uh, that's all Atoka has to do a good thing about.
The key is, is, is putting that little effort forward first to get what you want. Not settle for, don't settle for half. I mean, I mean, the type of business that you want, like if you want a, what kind? If you want a hotel or whatever. You are the end game. You know, everybody else is just support. The, the leadership here in town is the end game. Uh, and I'll tell you, we've worked with several of them and it, and it works, it works good like that.
The shock, the shocking event that took place when first started, Millington, when Terry was in the chamber, he was, he's, he'd been working hard for about a year. We, we started putting the chamber activities together with the IDB, which got there. But we asked Sharon Younger and Associates, another youth, and over there, this company that does studies on economic impact and that kind of thing.
It works with those.
It worked with that a lot. It, it works with that a lot. And the, the uh, those studies, we asked her, I said, you know, it's hard to define Millington. There's not very many people here. At that time, it was about eleven thousand five hundred people, all of them. When you studied, we got the census. And then what happened was she, she put a pin in the map, went out in an eight mile radius. It did not include Barlett, it did not include Arlington, but she found over a hundred thousand people that sort of.
Hundred and eight thousand.
Hundred and eight thousand. It was, it was, you've got Shelby Forest, you've got all small towns, you've got three or four, five thousand of them. If you get to larger towns like Atoka, you have the large towns like Munford, and you start putting that in with Millington, you know, you start putting it all together. Man, there's a bunch of people here. And you know what? You, you have traffic count over here. Think of all the people that drive through Atoka every day and drive back through again. That's people that you're going to get money out of are. So it's very valuable to you. That's, that's like trying to catch fish in a spillway out there. There's a spillway, you catch a few fish. That's what you need to do. That's what retailers want. They want traffic count, restaurants want traffic count. That's why you saw that explode first, Atoka, in Shelby County.
Thank you. If that would, would anybody, anybody got any questions or comments or alderman?
Anybody?
Anybody got anything you'd like to ask?
Can ask them.
Uh, sure.
Uh, yeah, I don't want to go backwards, but um, you, you hit on the point. I mean, we do want industry. That's what our job is. But we also want to listen to the public, what our public wants. But to go back to this ammo distribution you were talking about, looking in Tipton County, preferably Atoka. Like Kerry said, we've got a lot of land between two highways. How big a facility are they looking at and how much land would they be looking for? For something like that, question one. And the employment? How many employees would something like that be staffing to bring to our county, to bring to our town?
Yeah.
And if we can get that, that's additional tax revenue for our town.
So their offices in Germantown, they would love to be in Tipton County. Distribution center is in Jackson, Mississippi. And now that they're on the contract for the state, there's going to be all kind of opportunities for them in ninety-five counties. And so as far as uh, the size of space they need, I'll, I'll need to broker that meeting, uh, so we can have those discussions. Employee wise, it, it could be anywhere from ten to twenty employees right here in Atoka. Yeah.
Very easy to start.
It's corporate office.
Yeah.
And go keep the distribution center in Mississippi.
Yeah, I just didn't know what size facility, if we're looking for land and land that we may have, town already has, excuse me, you know, what size acreage and what size facility they're looking to build.
Sure. And you have that flat founding company we talked about? That is only taking fifteen acres right now. They, they have a five acre option next to it to expand someday, that they will hold and pay for. And uh, twenty acres, most, everything I deal with is twenty acres under, twenty-five acres each.
You know, and we like to hear ideas like that. I know Mr. Chairman sits beside me, you know, we're fairly new ID board. And we do want to hear people's comments. What do they want for this town? I'm new to the, to the uh, ID board myself, so I'm very interested. I've uh, you know, the town manager here, Mark, for a while. And um, just curious, you know, we can get something going. That's what we want to do, is move forward with something and some ideas that people might.
We sold them all to the county then for that very reason. But actually, I want to, I want to bring something else up. I don't know if people remember or not. Brother D and E, he probably remembers it uh, he coming up here to help y'all. We beat the gravel pit in Shelby County. And they came back, so I come up here to help y'all with them up here. So I've got some skin in the game when it comes to uh, Tipton County and uh, the area. And uh, that's when I, you know, it's gotta be what the public wants. Because it's not, if the public's not. Because if it's not, if the public's not happy, nobody's happy. Now, I know you can't make everybody in the world happy. You can come up with a plan that, you know, say, I want my industrial over here, I want residential over here, you know? And then you go through there and you barnstorm and you figure out, okay, if you want, if you want your your commercial or your uh. Say you want a shopping center here, okay, well, and over here, something else, well, how can I leverage? A TIL to put in infrastructure ahead of the game that's gonna help them over here. That way the city don't have to spend a bunch of money over here doing it. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? It's 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 just playing and it's and it takes a little time, but uh uh. At the end of the day, just don't, just don't sell for anything, you know? Get what you want. I mean, if you're gonna go through the trouble to doing this and and you know. You wanna be proud of where you live at, you know, I wanna be proud of what I've done, so. Uh, we share that. Bobby, reach out to me and I'll set the meeting up.
Okay. And one other thing, if you don't mind, you saying, you know, we want people to come back here and make us proud, not go somewhere to make us proud. So it's gonna be up to us and our citizens of the town to create something here that they can stay here. I feel like we've got fantastic schools here, we got Diersburg State, we got TCAT that's behind even the fourth plant. If we can get something in our town that we can pinpoint that education towards to keep our people here. That's what we need to do, is that retention right there.
You got another question from Boardman.
Thank you.
Hey, um, I'm curious, so John, you're still with the IDB for Millington? Right, cuz I was wondering how that was going to work. Okay. Okay.
I've I've told the uh vice chairman of board this week, and the chairman, we haven't had a chairman run out and step down. So uh, just not gonna move on. With a tough situation like it is in Milton, okay, opportunities a lot of places, but. Um, you know, I will say. That Milton experienced growth that they usually expect. Cuz of the TIF rule, okay, the TIF laws, the TIF laws are what made that possible. TIF laws are available to Toca just like they are anybody else. That's what you see happening, but. Uh, again, you don't use taxpayer money. I don't know how you get a bigger win-win situation than this. As far as the industry game, um, you just gotta start working the wire system, basically finding the markets and finding who's got a factory that's unhappy with where they're at. They wanna change those kind of things. And you'd be surprised at how how many people got older facilities now that they need new technology and new things and and they can't get it where they are. They have to come in and they can certainly get it here, and you're close enough to get anything you want from anybody wants.
And I think things are fixing to open up financially for the better for our country. And uh, I think uh, things are really gonna be on the move.
They money's more available.
Do you guys um currently right now, are you in either negotiation and or signed contracts with other municipalities?
This is our first. Well, we're in negotiations with Oakland.
With Oakland? So what's the long-term plan for for Economic Development Associates? And so um, you know, are are y'all branching out to all of West Tennessee, the whole state, sort of walk me through? Cuz collectively, the experience obviously is enormous between you three.
Uh, Kerry is has, he's one on the board for West Shaw.
Yeah.
Okay. And basically, uh, I've got a nephew that just, he graduated Rhodes Mark, he was the valedictorian over there four years ago. He just uh graduated Rhodes College. And I'm gonna land the plane here in the next couple or three years, you know? And uh, but we wanna take this to twenty-one West Tennessee county. Because one good thing is uh. I guess it's based on what state government does. And 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 it's it's gotten better for West Tennessee. It has gotten better for West Tennessee. But we wanna represent and get some of those dollars that's been going directly to middle and east Tennessee. Get that kind of uh of of uh. Thoughtfulness going for West Tennessee. Now, the Blue Oval's gonna be huge. And John, tell them how many people they think it's gonna be in this area.
They uh, the ECD did a study on population. They put a pin in the map over on in Arlington over there. They went up to stamp and then they came over here for Millington, in that triangle, they told us there's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand people in here. In the next twenty-five years. It's gonna be, so there's a title of people coming in. They've seen this happen at other places where they had these mega factories, these things. And they said, where you used to leave Wolf Chase and Pevil was the edge of town, and you head toward Danville, you're gonna have solid, solid buildings all the way to Jackson. What's gonna look at me?
We we've been working with a company outside of Carville, uh. Having the Bahalia, Mississippi area. What we've been helping them with is a little bit different from what we've talked about today. We've been helping them with major contacts with the state of Tennessee, politicals. As well as the state of Mississippi, uh because it comes back to funding, comes back to support. So we've been working with them for the last year. Uh, and will continue to do so. We're trying to get a YMCA out there to provide childcare. For the essential workers and that type of thing. All that's happening. And so to kind of piggyback on what Terry's saying, yeah, it it is a West Tennessee uh region flavor. But also we're Bahalia, Mississippi, and where we think the best need is, that we can bring value. If we can't bring value, then we're not the right group.
I would say that one last thing. Having experience with an IDB the last four, four years or so, uh uh it's been a very busy one right now, um. And with an IDB, for every dollar you put into it, the city puts into it, they get millions out. What happens, but you have to have a vehicle like a TIL to use to make those millions come out, which you gotta do. So the thing is, you gotta mine money, you gotta put the things in place that will pay you back for years and years on end. Just use them wisely. Be careful how you do it. Watch your overall debt in the city will help you. But you take an IDB and and I mean, think about that. Uh, on my annual, my annual cost of laying an IDB in Milton runs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, cuz I have employees. Employees and I have uh accounting that we have to do, we do a lot of things, uh and to to market out over there. And that that money goes in there, but we end up getting a target out of it. We end up getting a, an academy sports coming. Thank y'all for that too. Uh, we have a new TCAT facility being built in Milton now. Going for an aviation school, radiation mechanics, hydraulics, pressure, pressure line, avionics. A new air traffic control school being called in about two years. Those things are coming. It's, that happens because of the IDB. That's gonna get land, that's gonna find places, that's gonna meet people. We don't own all land. And we and we get, and we get the, we put people together, cuz in uh Toca especially, everywhere, you don't have any government on there. You have, you have all private. We have to make inventory of what private owners have that they wanna move, what they wanna get in on.
Yeah, that's.
That's what owners don't wanna fail.
That's, that's the difference. Ellington, they had, when, look, in nineteen, I believe it's ninety-four, ninety-six, I can't remember exactly, when the Navy downsized. We thought it was over with for them. Being, being in business there as long as we've been on Navy Road. Uh, we just thought it was over with, you know? And of course, time went long and uh. I got on the county commission, I met a guy named Gil Ryan. He's the one that did our first TIL in Milton. But we, the first TIL I did was uptown. Uh, Millington was the second TIL, uh Lakeland was the third TIL, uh. And 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 basically what we were showing these communities, that they didn't have to go in debt. Get off there. I mean, that's the big thing, you know, used to, the biggest part of development is putting in the services, putting in the infrastructure. That's what keeps people from doing it, pulling the trigger or not. Well, when the developer goes in and he puts that in, but he's got his own loan and he knows that loan. Is gonna get paid back at the end, he does a better job, builds a better product. And and that's kind of what with the role we play, we make sure all that comes out, comes online and and happens.
Often, often fifteen percent of the top project being paid for by other people with other people's money is getting his own taxes focused back on his own site. Makes a difference between having a project or not. Wasn't happening.
I'll ask you one more thing, um. As far as timelines and everything, I've done a lot, okay? If we had a uh, I mean, I guess you can answer us any way you want to. You could talk about how. How long it takes the IDB to really get on its feet and get going and everything like that, or you can take it from, okay, we got this property right here. We know what we want, okay? And and it's, it's ready to go. I mean, we got the, we got it, we own it or whatever. And um. Just starting the marketing and 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 we know what, this is what we want. Maybe it's a, maybe it was a target or whatever it may be, okay? What kind of timeframe? I mean, I, we need to kind of be able to manage some expectations, you know, how long it takes to do things like that.
I've got all. Vision, that was in twenty eighteen with nothing going on in Milton, not nothing. Twenty eighteen. Uh, right now, we did over two billion dollars worth. Now, here's the deal. The actual TIL and the paperwork and all that stuff has to be done exactly in order. But it's not, it's not, it's not a slow process. Basically, the acquisition of land, getting your developer, the biggest thing is doing civil work. I'd say you could, what? Well, how long did it take them to do the big shopping center for a year?
The Ford River Commons, they cleared the cotton field is in front of First Baptist Church there. And then uh, I think the dirt work took a long time. It took about five months, four, five months to get off the dirt work. Cuz you have to put the sewer and water in there at that time. You have to get ready to get all that into the ground. They had it all graded and ready to go, and then the actual construction started. That only took about a year and a half to do most of all that. And then the tenants were deciding before we started, so. You turn in a plan of a shopping center, it's theoretical, okay, and then you come in and say, these are the tenants, and when they get the tenants, everybody has a prototypical story. You change the size of the boxes, but I go, but you do. And then you come, you know, but you need a developer, you need a developer come in and say, I will ramrod this thing. I will buy for the loan at the bank and I will pay it back over fifteen years. And so you have these developers, in in that case of corporate, it was Brandon Buchanan, which I think he's been up here too. Brandon Buchanan Realty Group, Brandon Buchanan built the shopping center up in Diersburg. Uh, that we had seen and uh I do here in Nashville and Brandon said, I'll come down and take a look at Milton, but I don't know what's in Milton. And he came down and he sat in the parking lot of what used to be Dairy Queen, whether it's the cookout now. And he sat there on a Thursday afternoon at four o'clock and started watching traffic, and he goes, where in the heck are all these people coming from? So they're coming from everywhere. And so he sat there, he says, uh, I'll, I'll meet you tomorrow morning at your office. So he comes over at nine o'clock. And he says, uh, I've never seen so many people here. He says, I'm gonna look around for a site. So he goes and gets an opt-in on that street corner. There in front of First Baptist Church where the cotton field is. Then he turned, then he comes in and said, I'm gonna go back out there Friday afternoon. So he goes out there on a Friday afternoon. Have you ever seen a Friday afternoon in a Toca? You know what it looks like on Halloween at the morning. And he was out there from four o'clock until six thirty, and he probably said, I'm gonna be here, I'm exercising the option. He bought that corner, and you gotta get ready for different numbers. He bought that corner a lot up there in front of First Baptist Church for probably three point eight million dollars. They never, the people were asking for big numbers, and I said, they weren't getting them, and I'll have that and said, stagger. It's like, he asked me, was the guy I could pay? And he did, he got that and the rest is history, but. Um, beca- because for, when Ford River opened, by the way, at the opening of the Aldi. Uh, we saw an entourage of people come in, we didn't know, they were in suits, they started walking around looking at the Aldis, they started, then they started looking at the rest of the center. That group was the mayor and the board of Alderman and the city of Halls, Tennessee. If you go up to Halls in Tennessee right now and look, there's a duplicate of this shopping center.
Paris. Paris.
Oh, Paris, oh, no, not Halls, Paris, 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 I said Halls, Paris, Paris, Paris and Paris, it's Paris Crofting, it's with it. If you go to Paris in Tennessee and see it right now, it's sitting there, it has different outports than we have the rest of us, exactly like this. And they don't have the same stores exactly, they got ones they want. So, but the thing was, they saw it and they were, all they came up here for was because they were interested in getting an Aldi in Paris. But what, then they, they, we went back and that whole shop.
One, one last, one last point, Jimmy, that the question again comes back to the town. Who who's gonna jump the plane, right? And go to Cincinnati to retail conferences? Who's gonna go to the governor's economic development conferences, not just for Tennessee, but Arkansas, Mississippi, and really a seven-state TVA footprint? Uh, who's gonna work with, and Terry mentioned a while ago, when you bring jobs to town, it is the municipality, it is the state, it is the utility division. It takes a village to get people here. Somebody has to quarterback that.
Commercially speaking, the IDB is the reception center. It's where, like, when you have a, somebody wants to talk to the city about residential growth, they go see Mark. We're saying, they're probably right, I would say. And then you get the planning commission, right, involved. And well, in commercial, they come to the IDB and then they go see Mark, cuz we don't waste more time without knowing that there's something real there. There are a lot of people who claim they have things, but we check bankability out on people. We know they're real, they're not phonies. They can deliver goods, those kind of things, so. Uh, that's why you have an IDB and they screen, and the IDB then knows what the rules of the game are, and they get them all massaged, so they wanna go to city hall, they're not surprised.
Also, just one last thought, the the IDB serves as the Realtor for the city. Uh, uh, a city or municipality town, whatever you wanna call it. Can uh, can only sell property two ways. One, they had to surplus it and put it out for bid. Okay, they can do it that way, or if they have enough property, of course, the IDB can market that property like a real. So that's why the IDB is so important. Uh, because y'all serve, y'all wear several different hats.
Sometimes older buildings are as useful as new ones are. Y'all, y'all have probably seen uh the Beachwood property, they used to be part of Sandusky over there. We sold that for eight hundred and, eight hundred thousand dollars, and they've now converted into an engineering bond.
I'd like to be gentlemen, Alderman Deech from uh Toca. Uh, I have three questions for you, pretty simple ones. You talked about Blue Oval and the growth about Blue Oval coming. Sales are lagging on EVs, production's been pushed back to twenty twenty-eight. Where do you see the end game of how Blue Oval's gonna really totally impact our, our, our community? It was big push in the beginning of, wow, this is gonna be fantastic, now it's kind of falling flat on the doorstep. Where do you think, see, that's kind of my way of, my question.
Uh, what I, the, what I've gathered and what the people that I've talked to before. What they're gonna do is they're gonna, well, they have already retitled it. They're gonna do seventy-five percent gas burners and a quarter of them are gonna be hybrids.
And then uh. Well, let me, let me, let me add to that too. Uh, also keep in mind that SK battery that's at Blue Oval, right? They've hired three hundred people. They're also supporting uh Ford in Kentucky or even Ohio, so it's not just here, right? He was gonna take walks, they keep kicking the can down the road, but right now they're supporting uh Ford in other states.
You say uh Milton grew too fast? And 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 how can you sure, hold on, let me finish. And how can you assure that we won't grow too fast? Growth is good, right? But uncontrolled growth is not. And and so that would be my question is, has Milton grown too fast?
No, it really didn't, and then the 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 problem with Milton was. It's since a stagnant so long, so any growth was good for it, but let me tell you, it's been from there. Uh, that's what I talk about when I said, city, the people have to control what goes on. In other words, uh, they had to come up with a plan and that, and and the the public has to, to let's say one way or the other.
Here's my final question. Gentlemen, here's the big one, alright? Uh, how much do you cost or end, or how much do you cost uh to come out and help us? And do you guarantee your work? Meaning that if you say, hey, we're gonna get this, this and this for you, and it doesn't happen? You, you walk away and say, well, you didn't follow our plans the way we told you to, letter to the law. Hold on, let me finish. And so you're gonna pay us anyway, but we wind up with something we didn't ask.
I, most of all, I.
Yeah, let me answer that. We're gonna meet with them after the meeting, and they, we don't even have a proposal yet. But we're not even saying we're hiring them right now, so we didn't even have that.
I don't know if you're interested in letting.
Well, I, I, I do tell you this, the way the TIL works, ninety percent of what we do. Probably a hundred percent of it in some cases is in the TIL. We get paid by the developer. Or or from the county or whoever pays the TIL. Just wondering who's gonna pay the bills.
Thank you.
I was gonna say about the Milton's growing too fast, by the way. You, we talked to retail uh leasers all the time, and people that lease the store spaces. And I'll say that, they'll give a great feedback and say, watch it, we don't wanna have saturation, is what they call it. We don't want five grocery stores here, three hobby lobbies, and, but you know. What did Milton have before? A bunch of payday cash line places and you told. And but, you know, what did Millington have before? A bunch of payday cash line places and you talked to them a lot.
Totally understand, but then you made the reference earlier that Millington is now, because of some mistakes in their paperwork, or, you know, got hit with way too much on funding and now they're underwater.
Well, they're not underwater.
Sorry, let me rephrase that.
Well, they, but if something don't happen, those TIFs aren't gonna get paid back and then.
People won't do it anymore.
People won't pay it anymore.
You know what I'm saying? But what happened is, when the TIFs got in trouble, it was the school borrow. Borrowed one hundred percent of the money for school without saving anybody for ten or fifteen years.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate that. We've got an IDB. You got something?
I do.
Sure. This be the last question. This be the last one. Go ahead.
Hey, gentlemen, I'm Chris Shaker. I'm one of the towns in Hoversburg. A little question. I know you guys have mentioned you're gonna be representing the endgame twenty-one counties in West Tennessee. What, what, how do you determine if you have somebody interested in this area, where to place that business?
Well, that's where I was talking about. You tell us what you want, and then we'll go after them and see if we can kill them or not. That's how, that's how we do that. I think the focus is West Tennessee. And that's not, there's no talking about guarantee. There's no guarantee that we're gonna work for twenty-one counties. Realistically, we may work for five, but but I, but I think.
If it's two, even if.
If it's two, I think, I think the needs are different. I think the needs are different based on the municipality, right? We have a Buc-Ee's coming in in Oakland. I don't know if you want a Buc-Ee's in Atoka. So I think, I think the needs would be different based on the leadership, the people, and the infrastructure, and what you want to see. And then we go get it. Somebody has to bird dog it. That's where we come into play.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand your role. I know you mentioned whether it's a mayor, whether it's Jim, needs to be that.
Don't have to decide that, right?
We decide what we want. We also supply the mouthpiece of the town. What is your role in that? We decide what we want. We're speaking for ourselves. I just wanted to find, you know, what.
Our job's the maestro. We bring all that together.
I think, I think if you quote Kerry correctly, or what he, where he added is, we want to find what you want. Here's the deal. We know the leasers. We know the people that do these deals. And we've already worked with them already. We've done a bunch of them already. We know who to go have. If you decide you want a TJ Maxx, whether you want a Marshall Service or a TJ Maxx, it's the same company. You gotta go to and get one, those kind of things. But we have to work on the value proposition of Atoka. What is in it for everybody? We have to work on the story of Atoka. What's Atoka's story? What are we gonna tell people about how great Toke is? And that story is gonna matter because that's how we're gonna sell Toke. And we need to all be singing from the same sheet music when we do.
I don't know if you're one of this, but years ago, I'm going back to nineteen seventy-eight, early eighties. Phil Morris, who just passed away, by the way, was the mayor. And he was the, he was the lead attraction for the county. He just said, I'm gonna be the mayor. It's gonna be at every meeting. I'm gonna take every trip. I'm gonna work with Lamar Alexander. And they went together. They flew together, right? Two different parties, two different leaders. And they brought business to town. I, I think that's the key. Who's that gonna be for Atoka? Because we want to work with that lead attraction. We want to work with the IDB. And we want to be sure that we're delivering, that we're, that we are contributors, what you want to see. And if we can't contribute, right, then you don't need us. But I believe that we can. I also remind people this. There are many people that talk about economic development. And all of a sudden, in those meetings, we go to those conferences, we see a lot of people that ring the economic development bell. There are very few in this state. There are very few in this region that actually brings jobs to town.
Yeah.
I'm talking about putting buds in seeds. That's a whole different ballgame.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
The mayor's on the phone here.
Good, Mayor.
Well, yeah, yeah. First, let me apologize. I really wanted to be there in person. I have to be attending. I watched the whole session on YouTube. Streaming. I did have a commitment that was put in place about six, seven months ago. I just had to. But all I can say is, I echo what Matt said. These three gentlemen, the experience, nobody questions it. Nobody questions the capabilities. We've seen the capabilities in Millington. And we know that Kerry and Mr. John and Kerry, we know they have the contacts. And it's just to me, you know, whenever we're talking to the citizens, I've, I've used the phrase so many times, we're putting the chess pieces in place. We are, we are trying, when we did the IDB, when, when we're, you know, everybody wants that magic gold key ring of the economic development. I mean, Covington, Mark Herbison, very smart man. I guess I just want to say, I think we should plunder with this group because we've seen what they can do. We've got, they've got the experience, they've got the contacts. And it's like, it's like we need one missing piece we still need. And we can see in Toke firing on all engines. It's like a race car. But there's all great questions, great comments. Kerry, Kerry, Mr. John, thank you very much for coming. And I'm just impressed. And I know the board. You know, we're all, like you said, I think somebody just said, we gotta all work together. We gotta all be having the same message. And I think with y'all, that'll just be a hundred percent easier.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for that comment. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Appreciate the city letting us come in here and set this up and try to get some information out there, buy a little education too. And thank you, gentlemen. Now, the board's fixing, we're gonna adjourn this meeting and IDB's fixing to be back in our conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Colonel.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.